Names of everyone for security. Okay, thank you. And then my second announcement is I just want to acknowledge that we are in the middle of the Jewish holiday known as Shavuot. And Shavuot is a real celebration. It's when people of the community celebrate the occasion which marks the event of God giving Moses the Ten Commandments at Mount Sinai. So Shavuot in Hebrew translates into weeks. It's also known as the Feast of the Weeks. And this name reflects the seven-week counting period between Passover to Shavuot, which symbolizes both the agricultural cycle of the first fruits and the spiritual journey towards receiving the Torah. The Jewish holiday of Shavuot this year began yesterday and it ends tomorrow at sunset. So this is a festival of celebration and joy. And I just wanted to say from a very personal perspective that if you are friends with any Jewish people, you have Jewish neighbors, you have Jewish colleagues, wish them a happy Shavuot because God knows that's what we need right now. Thanks a mayors. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have councillor Tweed.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I do have a few announcements. This month is the Ontario Senior Month. Last Friday, thank you for all the staff support. We host our senior barbecues in the Mill Pond area. So appreciate all the efforts from our city staff to support this event. The second one I want to announce is also last Saturday in Richmond Green Park, the Road Watch Committee of Richmond Hill hosts our first of Richmond bike radio and safety training. Thank you so much for our road safe communities, also for the VRP. York Region Police support this event. Yeah, I see a lot of kids riding there with families and they provide all the bicycle trainings and also safety checkup for the community. Appreciate all that first summers here. So if you drive or ride bicycles outside, please show your respect to both sides, mutual inspections and also I'll give a reminder for our kids as well. If you ride bus in the summer day, please pay attention to the safety measures. Next one will be from York Region. I just received notice last week. So York Region announced six on demand or on request sixty-five years plus service for the transit. If you are more than sixty-five years old, you can call certain numbers and the vehicle will be on your demand to be available for you for traveling. And it might be a small vehicle or maybe a taxi, et cetera. So this is the new services. We are looking for this for quite a long time and finally it's on the land, it's in practice now. So all the seniors, if you have travel plans, please try to use the service. The last one is this weekend, Saturday in World Ford, we're going to host our fourth year garage sale. So far there are around ninety-eight families join this event. We're not hosting have a center park or locations. It will be on your own lines. I'm going to send those later, later on. So with the detailed address of those ninety-eight locations. So if you receive that one, take a look at the map and address, try to visit. Thank you so much.
You. And next we have councillor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. The annual water free barbecue was held last Friday and despite the inclement weather, we have over four thousand attendees. So I would like to thank my assistant, Terrence, our wonderful festivals and event staff. They're amazing. And also all the park staff, recreational staff, operations staff, they're all help up to make this possible. So thank you. And also thank you councillor Davidson, councillor Tree, councillor Schill and also councillor Thompson for attending and the MP and MPP. So thank you. Look forward to to next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Mayor West.
Thank you very much. And just to say I'm sorry that I missed the party councillor Liu and hopefully will be there next year. However, my reason for missing the party is we, our regional local councillor, Deputy Mayor Chan and I were at the Federation of Canadian Municipality Conference in Calgary. Tiring conference and quite intense as we, you know, talk to municipal leaders across the entire country. Interestingly enough, we arrived at the airport, turned our phones on and we're about the news that they were in a state of emergency with a major water main break, which I got to tell you was very interesting being there. And I know that Mayor, the Mayor of Calgary, Mayor Gondak, did say at the end that it was nice for her to have thirty-one thousand of her clothes or thirty-one hundred of her closest municipal allies understanding what she was going through at the time. But anyway, I just wanted to mention there were so many things that happened at that convention and so many good conversations and so on. But three resolutions were passed that I thought were notable. There was a resolution passed supporting the elimination of domestic violence, which I appreciated at a national level. There was a resolution about funding food banks, base funding for food banks on a federal level, which I know was, you know, an important thing for us here in Richmond Hill, given the needs of our food bank. And we had many conversations and a resolution dealing with the kind of the shocking rise in harassment of elected officials and kind of the overall reduction in the amount of reasonableness in talking about community issues. So the reason I mention that is, first of all, they're very important issues that we're certainly dealing with in our municipality. But there are also three issues that we have previously on this council put forward positions and motions on. And I was really proud to see that we were showing leadership in that in the sense that we've done that long before it came onto the national stage. So I thank FCM and all the colleagues for doing that. I think it was an important time. I was proud that, you know, Richmond Hill was there to be represented on the national stage. And, you know, in talking to many of our municipal colleagues across the country and listening to some of the things that we have in common and some of the things that actually frankly make us different, it wasn't lost on me, the quality of our municipality here in Richmond Hill in comparison to the across the country. We were all proud of our municipalities, but I was very proud of our municipality on that kind of national stage. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And next we have regional and local councillor DePaula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. The first is, well, with regards to June being seniors month, our city's been doing a great job in providing events for seniors through Richmond Hill. The fifty-five-plus choir recently performed and we had the fifty-five-plus seniors barbecue at the Mill Pond. And during that event, I was fortunate to bring greetings on behalf of mayor and councillors. And we recognized Norman Mado as the senior of the year here in Richmond Hill. And he's a volunteer with our Computer Technology Volunteer Association for seniors and supporting them with getting through their daily lives, assisting them with the new requirements to be versed with computer technology, just to get through everyday life. So a lot of our seniors take advantage of that program. It's run strictly on a volunteer basis. And Norman Mado puts out their newsletter, manages their website, is a huge contributor as a volunteer and hosts their monthly, bi-monthly meetings. So a very worthy recipient. And later, later this month, where we have the fifty-five-plus ice cream social and I'm one year away from qualifying for that fifty-five-plus ice cream. And well, next year I'll be a member of the club. So my other announcement, Madam Chair, is with regards to the barbecue, the community barbecue that I'm hosting at the Mill Pond is coming up this Saturday. It's just three days away now and the response has been overwhelming. It's just fantastic how many people across Richmond Hill have pre-registered and are going to be taking advantage of the opportunity, but it is completely open to the public. Anyone that resides in Richmond Hill gets a free burger and a drink and we're going to be closing Mill Street and we've got some wonderful vendors lined up and it should be, it'd be a wonderful day, weather permitting. And just, just ask through you, Madam Chair, that if the mayor could use his strong powers to give us nice weather, we'd appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, well, with that being said, and with great weather on the way, looking forward to the Mill Pond event on Saturday. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And next we have regional and local councillor Chan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to echo Mayor West's comments regarding the gathering of local municipal leaders from coast to coast to coast just a few days ago in Calgary. Although unexpected, as the mayor said, it actually really telling because that the aging infrastructure of all municipalities across Canada need to have, you know, really predictable and also more lasting funding by the orders of government. So the timing on timing, depending on how you look at it, about the hundred, almost hundred-year-old, what I mean that in Calgary that actually broken down and affecting about sixty percent of water supply in Calgary, make a strong statement in support, I gather in this case, for our collective core municipality, for a new municipal growth framework, the kind of funding formula that in the past would not work for twenty-first century. So it's good that all federal parties, including Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, saying, yeah, need to work with the municipalities to provide a livable quality of life for all Canadians. Other than that, locally, although that there's no need to play for the weather, but because it'll be indoor, but good weather will be nice. I'm just now to share also the speakers for the roundtable I'll be hosting on June twentieth from seven to eight thirty PM at Bayview Hill Community Centre. We heard that it's talked about June is seniors month. I have first on the roundtable, a social worker from Care First, Seniors Community Services Association, and she's going to talk about how to take care of seniors. So it's not only for seniors, but also for perhaps family members, caregivers to support seniors are welcome. And the second part is a senior safety officer from the York Regional Police who was speaking about safety as relating to seniors. So all welcome. It would be nice if you RSVP at my email, gottman.chan@richmond.ca. We look forward to enriching whether the attendance, seniors or not, that with more information about care for seniors and safety for seniors. And thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I think next, nope, that's it. No other announcements? Okay, moving on. Introduction of emergency time-sensitive matters, seeing none. Adoption of the agenda. Can someone please? Councillor Silvitz? And there's no secunders. On we go. Disclosure of pecuniary interest. Oh, call the, oh, right, no secunders, but there is a vote. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Next, disclosures of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof, seeing none. Identification of items requiring separate discussion. Yes, councillor Shu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to put eleven point four, twenty twenty-four Community and Cultural Grant Program.
Eleven point four. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes, councillor Tree.
Also eleven point six.
Eleven point six, traffic regulation changes?
Yeah, eleven point nine.
Eleven point nine?
Yeah.
Hey, hang on, hang on. Eleven point nine, request approval, one thirty performance drive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also eleven point eleven.
Okey dokey, that's Leslie Richmond Developments. Eleven point eleven. Okay, anybody else? No. All right, thank you very much. Now the adoption of the remainder of the agenda. Do I have? Someone to move the motion, please? Councillor Silvitz, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Public hearings. I see none. So we start with a presentation by Frank Corassa? Corassa? Sorry, I've written it down three ways phonetically and I still didn't get it right. A presentation regarding public works operations regarding Windrow program review. And this is a twenty-minute program, a twenty-minute presentation. Over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of committee. So the intent of the staff report that we've presented to you is to provide you with a comprehensive review of the Windrow program. Next slide. Let's go to the agenda. So the staff report has a lot of detail and my suggestion is to read this staff report in tandem with the March of, March twenty nineteen staff report that created the program. The combination of the two give you a good read in terms of what was originally intended and what has since been delivered. So in this presentation, we're going to cover the difference between the PWO enhancement program and the Windrow program. And that's very important in order to understand the financials, the cost and performance of the Windrow program. I'm going to quickly summarize what other municipalities around us are doing. And finally, we're going to compare different scenarios. So the cost of an in-house program as it's currently structured versus the cost if it were to be contracted out. And then the cost avoidance that could be realized if the Windrow program were eliminated or if it were to be converted into a seniors program. Next slide. So first, some background. The program was created in March of twenty nineteen. Windrow was a twenty percent component of the Winter Public Works Enhancement Program. Implementation started in the fall of twenty nineteen and I believe the first Windrow deployment was in fact early in twenty twenty. There are two significant components to the program, to the creation of the programs. First of all was the deletion of the eighty summer and the forty winter seasonal positions and the creation of eighty full-time positions. Now, this has been characterized in different ways. If you look at the twenty nineteen report, they refer to it as a conversion of seasonal staff to permanent. I find that actually a bit confusing to follow. I prefer to look at it as a deletion of a total of a hundred and twenty seasonal positions over the course of the year and the creation of the eighty. So effectively what this did is it created forty winter or forty positions to cover the winter months. And this was the workforce that would deliver the winter service enhancements and therefore the Windrow program itself. The second component was the purchase of the thirty-five heavy-duty tractors to perform the Windrow clearing in an efficient and production-like manner. So next slide. So what is the Public Works Enhancement Program? Well, it was intended to deal with the PWO sustainment issues that existed at the time. For example, it was time-consuming and inefficient to be recruiting a hundred and twenty seasonal positions every year. Recruiting eighty summer seasonals, for example, meant that we were hiring the eighth best applicant each summer. So clearly this was challenging and certainly a challenge towards building excellence and succession in the workforce. There are a lot of other elements in terms of the PWO Enhancement Program. Those are laid out in the staff report. Reading that section of our current staff report in tandem with the twenty nineteen report on that issue really gives you a complete picture. Also, the high ratio of seasonal to full-time employees during the summer months created its own service challenges. And I would note that the Enhancement Program also created surge capacity that, as we know, was needed several times in the years that followed. So the ability to deal with emergency situations that really wasn't there before, but is in place now. So I draw your attention to the table to, that summarizes the financial impacts. So the deletion of the eighty summer and the forty winter seasonal positions, that created a savings of three point one six one million dollars. The creation of the eighty full-time positions was a net plus of six point one million. So the total impact back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty was two point nine three nine million dollars. If you factor that up, apply COLA since then, what's that worth in today's dollars? It's the equivalent of three point one seven million dollars. I also want to point out that the actual total impact back in, back in twenty twenty, when the program was created, came in at some seven hundred thousand dollars below the initial estimate that was reported in the March twenty nineteen staff report. In that staff report, it reported the total impact would be three point six four million. And in fact, it came in at two point nine. Next slide. Next, let's look at the equipment that was purchased. Attachment one has some detailed information for you to consider. Machines were purchased for about five point five million and were originally planned to last ten years. We did a third-party condition assessment of the equipment for the purpose of this staff report. The equipment is in fact in very good condition. It is on paper five years old, but vastly underutilized, so really no more than one year old based on engine hours. Therefore, as we approach year ten, we want to either extend the service life of the existing equipment beyond the ten years, look at eleven, twelve years if at all possible. Or as an alternative, if we do collectively decide to trade in the equipment or do something different in terms of pivoting the program, then selling the equipment at year ten would recover a greater than expected salvage price. The other important piece is the estimate of the annual assumed depreciation for this equipment. So we've computed that at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per year. And we're using this as a surrogate for the annual equipment standby when comparing ourselves against contracting out. And this is important if we're going to compare against the cost of contracting out, we need an apples-to-apples comparison. Staffing equipments, staff standby are comparable, but we needed a number to reflect the equivalent cost to compare against the cost of a contracted equipment. So the three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is what we're going to use. Next slide. Now let's look at program performance. Since this past winter was very mild and therefore not fully reflective of a typical year, we combined the cost and the statistics of the last two winters. The average completion time for the last two winters was eleven point six hours per event, so well within the service standard that we've established. Access Richmond Hill received some ninety to ninety-five calls per Windrow event and about fifty-five to sixty percent of those were dealt with directly by Access Richmond Hill as first call resolution. This table summarizes the number of calls that were investigated by staff. These are the ones that were passed on to staff and required investigation. So over the two winters, we had thirteen Windrow events. About thirty-seven driveways per event were investigated by staff. So that's one in under twelve hundred driveways that required an investigation. Next slide. Next, let's look at the. Oh, sorry. So now, so now we're going to look at. So now we're going to look at the results of those investigations. So. Yeah, so the results of the investigations are as follows. After staff went out in the field and took a look at those driveways, determined where there were legitimate deficiencies that were ours to resolve. The net result was that we identified an average of about four point two deficiencies per event that were again legitimately ours. Might have been the Windrow was improperly done, might have been the Windrow machine caused some damage to the driveway apron, for example. So these were one in ten thousand four hundred driveways that legitimately had a deficiency and were therefore ours to resolve. So we therefore think that really, given this low deficiency rate, we don't think there's a lot of opportunity in terms of doing better in that area, but we definitely think that there's better, there's opportunities to do better in terms of total delivery time. So that's where our efforts are going to focus. Next slide. Next, let's look at program costs for each of the last two winters. The eleven events in twenty-two, twenty-three and the two in twenty-three, twenty-four. I draw your attention to the line that reads subtotal direct Windrow program cost ranging from two hundred and ten thousand to five hundred and fifty-two thousand. So these are the costs that went against the annual operating budget. So these are legitimate costs that were carried in our operating budget for the last two years, the last two winters. These, in fact, we believe are good bookends as they represent the expected cost for both a mild winter, this past winter, and a more severe winter the year before. So on a per driveway basis, these translate to four dollars and seventy-seven cents to twelve dollars and fifty-five cents per driveway per year. To compare ourselves against the cost of contracting out, we added in the equipment depreciation that I made reference to in the previous slide. That's a three hundred and eighty-five thousand, which, as I said, is the equivalent of an equipment standby charge. And this nets us thirteen fifty-two to twenty-one, twenty-nine per driveway per year. Next slide. So now let's compare against the cost of contracting out. So we use the existing road plowing contract and the unit rates in that contract to determine what the cost would be for Windrow services if it were to be done by a contractor. The total cost for the last two winters, we think would have been in the range of about eight hundred and twenty to about one point oh five million. So that's eighteen sixty-four to twenty-three seventy-five per driveway per winter. These are anywhere from nine percent to thirty-eight percent higher than the total cost per driveway of the current in-house program. And again, I remind you, this is an apple-to-apple comparison because we do have the component dealing with the equipment in the estimate. Next slide. Now let's take a look at what some of the municipalities around us are doing. First, the two that provide full citywide Windrow programs are Toronto and Vaughan. The Toronto program is really not a good comparator for us due to scope and scale. The Vaughan program is a better comparable. It is twice the size of our program, but we think it is still a good indicator of what the cost of contracting out would be. Their unit price reported last year was about twenty-three thirty-three per driveway. And we have to back this number out from publicly available information. They have a two point one million dollar budget, that budget divided by their number of driveways, and that's us at twenty-three thirty-three per driveway. So this is very similar to the contracting out costs that I presented in the previous slide. So this corroborates our numbers. So we believe our estimate for contracting out is a good number. Next slide. We did survey ten municipalities in total. The two from the previous slides are the ones that provide the full service. The remaining eight provide a seniors and disabled persons program. All of them maintain an extensive administrative process to monitor eligibility, accept applications, and then to go back to ensure ongoing eligibility. Two of the municipalities capped a number of eligible homes to maintain and maintain a waiting list. The remaining six will accept any application and provide services if in fact all the eligibility criterias are met. And four do charge a separate fee ranging from a hundred to two hundred dollars per driveway, some with, some without HST. Next slide. Next, we considered what eliminating the Windrow program would look like. To ensure no impact to the Public Works Enhancement Program, other than the deletion of the Windrow program, we would need to eliminate eight full-time positions and recreate eight summer seasonal positions. We would send some twenty-nine Windrow machines to auction and these would return about two point nine million dollars to capital. The remaining six have used for us and we would use them for other purposes. The operational cost avoidance of not providing Windrow services in the last two years would range between four hundred and five thousand to about five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Again, we look at these as bookends and most typical winters would fall somewhere in between. I would note that the previous winter was six deployments, so well within that sweet spot between the two, those two bookends. Next slide. Finally, we looked at what a seniors and disabled persons program would look like. We estimate demand for this kind of program would be at four thousand six hundred and fifty driveways. This was a number that was a bit difficult for us to estimate, but ultimately what we did is we pre-rated the Markham program, assuming Markham and Richmond Hill demographics are similar enough. And what we did is basically took the ratio of population to service driveways in Markham and applied it to Richmond Hill to come up with the forty-six fifty. The program would need administrative support and we have not included this cost in the analysis. We would lose the current production line delivery of the current Windrow program. So the current program averaged in excess of a hundred driveways per hour per machines, very much production line process. The machine starts at the beginning of a route, drops the blade at every driveway, proceeds at a consistent speed. So it's very much a production line process. The seniors program though would mean servicing a dispersed network of driveways spread out across the city. So a lot of, a lot of driving time between from one address to the next and making sure that in fact the seniors program, Windrow plowing stays behind the street plows. So that's somewhat more difficult to administer. So after factoring in the driving time, the production per Windrow machine, we believe, would be very little, not much better than about ten driveways per hour. So that's a huge drop in productivity and therefore from a cost perspective. And therefore, from a cost perspective, a loss of productivity that really drives what the end result is of, what the end result would be of a seniors program. Our analysis indicated, indicate that we have a production, that we need a production rate of about 10.5 driveways per hour for the seniors program and the full citywide program in essence to break even. Any recovery at auction for selling the machines would be offset by the cost of purchasing a fleet of lighter duty vehicles and accessories and decking out that equipment in order to perform the work at night. In the alternative, the existing windrow machines could be kept, but they're really not ideal for driving. They're great for plowing, they're great when they drop the plow every 30, 40 seconds, but they're really not great pieces of equipment to be driving around the city to look for the next address. Nonetheless, that could be done. So with all that, we conclude that really the service reduction from 44,000 driveways to 4,650 driveways for a seniors program really would produce no meaningful cost savings for Richmond Hill. Next slide. So the next two slides basically summarize quickly. So first of all, the windrow program delivery costs are highly dependent on the windrow conditions. And that's the reason for the two bookends that we chose in terms of the last two winters. The program is efficient, it's delivered in a production line fashion. Operating costs range from $4.77 to $12.55 per driveway per year, so that's quite modest. Total cost, including allocation of the windrow fleet, for the purposes of comparison, again, against contracting out, $13.52 to $21.29, again, per driveway per year. Contracting out is therefore expected to be more costly. We estimate 9 to 38% more costly depending on the number of deployments and the severity of the winter. Deficiency rates under the existing program are very low. Service delivery average is 11.6 hours per event. So as I said before, that's where the opportunity for improvement, we believe, lies. Next slide. Estimating the windrow, sorry, eliminating the windrow program would produce an annual cost avoidance of anywhere between $405,000 and $590,000 against our operating budget. 29 windrow machines would be sent to auction. The seniors program would be operationally inefficient to deliver, and conversion, we believe, would generate no meaningful cost savings. As we approach 2029, which is the year 10 of the program, staff will assess the possibility of some alternate fleet management strategies. And I addressed that very briefly in terms of either extending the useful life of the current equipment or doing something different in terms of the renewal cycle. The city does need to continue to communicate the level of service to homeowners to homeowners and in particular homeowner responsibilities. So I didn't cover that in the slide deck, but it is dealt with in the staff report. The efficiency and the effectiveness of the program is a partnership. When cars are left at the bottom of the driveway, cars are left in the street, when street hockey nets are left at the bottom of the driver, the basketball nets are left, or when a homeowner constructs obstructions as part of their landscaping along the driveway apron that impedes the delivery of service, that both holds up the service, slows it down, it slows it down for the residents that are next in line to receive the service. So from our standpoint, some communication around homeowner responsibilities is certainly merited for future years. In our view, the next opportunity for a full program review, should committee and council wish to do so, would be in 2029. And that would be coordinated with the turnover, the next turnover of the equipment. Next slide. So that's our presentation and myself, the manager who looks after the program here also, and the commissioner, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, are we, we're going straight to questions regarding strictly this presentation? Thank you. All right, does anyone have any remarks? Counselor Shu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to support this report first. Do I have to support this? No? Okay.
This is just a discussion about the report, and we'll deal with this item later as part of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So I have a few questions before I make my comments. The first one is regarding the slide number eight. This is about the program costs. And we all know that the last winter season in 2023, 2024 was a beautiful one. And not much snow, so we can see that the operating cost is much lower than the previous year. That makes sense.
Yep.
And, but the staff's standby costs remaining the same and even more than the previous winter. So I think it's an overhead cost for the QB staff, right? So my first question is, are all these QB staff a contract in a 10-year term? Is it, is all this staff...
Through the chair, these costs, the other element, there are many ways of cutting and slicing the data and the numbers. The piece that I didn't address is that the program has fixed costs and has variable costs, right? So among the fixed cost is the standby, is the standby charge. So standby starts on November 1 of each year, ends on March 30 of every year. So for a winter maintenance standpoint, not only in the windrow program, but also in street plowing, sidewalk operations, QB staff are put on standby through that entire period. And therefore, we have ready ability to call people in on any storm event. In this particular case, what this reflects is, in essence, two factors. One is the COLA from one year to the other, basically the inflation. And the other one, a minor change would be the number of days. Either one more day or one less day from one year to the other. But the standby, the standby charge is a fixed cost every year. Compared against contracting, contractor would do no different, would hire staff, put them on standby for the winter, and they would get paid a lesser amount to be on standby and a higher amount when deployed. So again, that's, that's basically baked into the program.
So through, Madam Chair, so in that case, if we really have any changes in the windrow program, so that we have to pay a huge amount of compensation to, for this early termination of this contract for those QB staff, right? Am I, am I correct?
Through the chair, the, I think the alternative that was presented, the analysis, if we were to eliminate the windrow but not adversely affect the services...
If I can interrupt, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. Just for council's consideration, if we are discussing things related to the employment of persons, city staff, we would have to go to closed session, and we would refer this item to closed session to council next week. So just some cautionary on how far we go.
I see. So I will just put a hold, okay, for this question. So my, my next question is regarding slide number 10, the comparison with other cities. We only have data from Toronto and Vaughan. So does this, does it mean only these two cities provide full in-house windrow program for every single household?
Yeah, through the chair, we surveyed 10, these are the two that were identified. We knew these were full service before we even surveyed them. As I said, Toronto is really not a good comparator for us for a whole bunch of reasons. The Vaughan one, though, really is a good comparator. We know anecdotally that there are other municipalities that have canvassed, that have received quotes from the contracting community in terms of launching full windrow service programs. I don't know that any of that information is out there in the public domain at this particular point. And we hear these rumors. But the lion's share of the municipalities, in fact, do deliver the seniors program or a variation of the seniors program. The, ultimately, the issue in terms of comparing the full service versus the seniors program is what is the additional incremental time, effort, and cost associated with it. But really, Vaughan, Vaughan, we do believe is a good comparator for us.
Okay. And my next, my next question, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that if it's related to the presentation, but I tried to ask first, okay? Regarding the slide number 14, as one of the bulletins states that contracting out is expected to be more costly. I have a question regarding this statement, just curious. Why did the city opt to outsource the road plowing to the contract service? Just curious.
Yeah, through, through the chair, and that's a good question. I would suggest, well, this is before my time, but I would suggest having a 50-50 split, as we currently have, between in-house delivery, so city staff perform half the city, our contractor performs the other half of the city. When you look at what we get out of that, we get a certain level of risk mitigation. We get the ability of a contractor to perform some of our work in a very severe winter. And conversely, we have the ability of city staff to pick up and perform some services where the contractor is deficient. From a costing perspective, one could go either way in terms of costing which is better and which isn't. But from a risk mitigation perspective, it is a good strategy.
Okay. Actually, I, I want to have some comments, but I'm not sure that it is a good time to throw my comments because it's not related to the presentation.
So there is an opportunity to discuss this item later. We're just reacting to the report at this point, so there will be opportunity to speak about it.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all my questions. Thank you so much, and thank you.
Thank you. Mayor West.
Actually, the more I think about the question, it's actually a comment, so I'll wait.
Thank you. And Counselor Silvett.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Carissa. Very good presentation. I just have two comments, or two comments with regard to what's before us. Could you please go to slide 11? So that second bullet, which says provides free, for free service, that's really a misnomer, isn't it? Because it's not free, comes from taxpayers' money that provide the service for operational costs and regional capital costs. Still, it's still a pocket that comes out of taxpayers' money. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes. Free meaning that there is no separate charge, like the four municipalities that in fact do have a separate fee that's applied.
Okay, thank you. And then if we could go to slide number 13. Your last bullet there conclude that the service reduction from 44,000 to 4,650 would generate no meaningful cost savings. I'm not great at math, but I don't quite understand that. How, how do you square that with that statement? Because it does seem like there must be some cost savings.
Through the chair. So I, in the slide deck and in the presentation, I addressed the loss of efficiency. So we go windrow program, and you've seen the windrow machines, they go down the street, and basically they drop that blade every give or take 40 seconds at a driveway. That is different than a piece of equipment driving around Richmond Hill with a driver with a list of addresses and which driveway they are to hit. We think that production rate is probably not much better than 10 driveways per hour. What I would also point out is, and this is something from the March 2019 staff report, if you mind that staff report, there's a line that basically reads that the seniors program at that time, which for that period of time had been contracted out, was already costing $360,000. That seniors program costs $360,000 to deliver service to, what, about 1,200 seniors at a time? Now we're talking potentially four times the number of driveways. So factor out that 340, add some inflation, five years worth of inflation, and now gross it up to handle 4,000 to 5,000 driveways. We're now at the same cost as a full city program.
That's why you're the director. Thank you for explaining that to me. I, now I understand it much, much better. That's all, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Counselor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. So I don't have a question, but I want to have a comment here for the snow services. Since I was elected in November, I start from that month, I've been contacted numerically from different residents regarding to the snow services. So I have some data here I want to share. In our workforce, we have around 180 streets. And for the snow reporting related, that's going to be covered more than 100 streets. You can imagine, around 60, 70% of our residents has issues regarding to the snow services. So the maximum report related to the snow service, just in one month, I got 70 of them out of other services. And from the history perspective, in the past three years, I received 151 snow reports related from our residents. The majority related is the snow windrow services. I want to acknowledge here, so we have the staff working in the, for example, very earlier morning. If there's a big snow, you can imagine, one person, one car driving on the white line, and nighttime was only one light there. Imagine how difficult that was. And some streets have very special conditions as well, very narrow street, snow-covered ground, you don't know what the slope will be, right? It's very dangerous for them as well. So I want to acknowledge all the hard work from my heart. Just thank you for all the stuff, working day and night, you solved the problem. I know, snow services are not perfect. So the services can outreach to everybody, make it better. But I think through the past two or three years, I worked with Ms. Stiles, and also Frank, and also Diego. I see the improvement of service. For all identified problems on each individual street, we know the problem there, we're trying to get it better. So from my personal experience, I support this program. Look for the five years ago, six years ago, without snow services there, only five centimeters snow or 10 centimeters snows. Even you clean your own driveway, you cannot get off from your own street. So that's a problem we faced before. And so far, yeah, we acknowledge the snowbank issues there. And you might clean your snowbank two or three times because the, the snow driving maybe blocked your driveway a few, few times a day. But you know, we're trying to solve problem. As long as service is there, the only thing we can do is enhance it yearly, but yearly.
With respect, this is to asking questions about the report.
No, it's just comments. Thank you so much.
So we, we can do those later. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Next, we have counsel, regional and local Counselor Chan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Director and whole team. I know it's not easy to drive around during winter times when you rather stay indoors. So regardless of the cost, I understand the hard work. The, I would raise some question there on, but I just want to say, now, I share some of my colleagues, I don't know what's the right term, a bit of skepticism about that potential not saving as much, would we not either contract it out or, or remove the service? One aspect on the presentation, I don't think is included. What about the addresses fronting on regional road, like Sixth and Avenue, or Algen Mills for that matter?
I'll, I'll let the manager respond to it.
Through you, Madam Chair, the, the residents that have been part of the old program continue to receive that service. No new residents are part of the program now, moving forward.
Okay, thank you for your answer. Through, Madam Chair, if you understand it correctly, peers in the program, meaning they might have registered under the previous program before we have windrow clearance for everybody, it will be people like either seniors, people, families with persons who disappeared, is correct. So if they don't fall into those, they won't get our windrow clearance service, correct?
Through the manager, that, that's correct. Through the previous council-approved staff report, only seniors that were part of the original program continue to receive that service.
Thank you. I, I think that's gap we can talk about later on, thank you. And the service time, we can talk about that later. But thank you for all the work. I know it's not easy. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else. Oh, Counselor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. So $4.77, is, is it per season, per driveway, or per deployment?
Through the chair, per driveway, per season.
Wow. And compared to Vaughan, which is $23.
But again, we have to make sure it's apple-to-apple comparison. We have to throw in to those costs, and that's why the table adds in $3.85 for equipment to basically make it a full apples-to-apples comparison. So I think I said in the presentation, on a typical winter, mild, severe, anywhere from 9% less to 38% less than contracting out, depending on number of deployments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. I too have questions. I've, I've, because it's so entwined with the, with the operations, with the other things in operations, I find, I haven't seen two apples beside each other, so I look forward to talking about that. So we will conclude and speak with you later when the item comes up. Thank you very much. And now we will move on to our... Oh, move to receive the report.
Move to receive your fifth.
Thank you, Counselor Chan, all those in favor. That passes, thank you. Now we move on to our very... Now we move on to our very patient delegations. The first one is Yasmin Mushar, Three Jodhpur Lane. And that, are you here? Is that one? That's electronic. All right.
Hi there. Sorry, I'm just, uh...
Oh, there you are. We can see you and you can hear you. Success. Welcome. You have five minutes.
Hi there. So my name is Yasmin. I am the owner of Three Jodhpur Lane. And I'd like to comment on the development proposal. I believe it's 9535 Bathurst Street. I might be mixing up those numbers a little bit there. But the development proposal seeks to include Jodhpur Lane as well as Hostel Lane as through streets to the development at 9535 Bathurst. So first off, Jodhpur Lane and Hostel Lane are technically private roads. This townhouse complex and the common elements are maintained at the cost and care of the homeowners that own this property. And it's concerning to us that this request to use our property has not been brought to the attention of the Board of Directors of the townhouse complex or the homeowners. It's inappropriate to go ahead and include these private roads of our existing community in the plans for a new development without any consultation at all with the owners of these roads. Regarding using the road, this raises several safety concerns for our community. The width of Jodhpur Lane is just about 19 feet. And so that specifically is where the entry and exit point for the development is proposed. And the standard width for a two-inch street is 24 feet. So considering that several of us in the homes will be entering and exiting our own driveways via this route, this request to increase traffic in the area is a concern. As well, we have several families in the complex with children, and they play and ride their bikes on this private road. And turning this into a through street and a dense through street at that will cause congestion and affect the way that all current homeowners utilize their space in their community. These concerns bring into question the safety and value of living in this complex for current occupants and future prospective occupants. While there is an easement and this allows for the use of the roads, it should not allow for the destruction of any part of our common elements, including any part of the fence around the complex or the adjacent landscaping. It is reasonable that the Board of Directors and homeowners of Jodhpur Lane and Hostel Lane should be consulted and in agreeance of next steps for this development before it is passed and in motion. As this development is being reviewed, please consider the concerns of the homeowners of Hostel Lane and Jodhpur Lane. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Adam Layton with Goldberg Group regarding 9593 Bathurst Street. This is electronic as well. Mr. Layton, welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I can't, sorry, I can't, can't see you. Oh, there you are. Okay, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will take this opportunity to simply respond directly to the comments made by the prior delegate. We, we expected these comments would arise. And I do feel that it is captured very well in the staff report, which outlines the, that the plan to use the adjacent common element laneway for access. As the delegate also referenced, there is an easement in favor of the lands to both north and the south to facilitate access. As council may be aware, this is a rather standard process. And I would also note that the, the requirement to provide pedestrian and vehicular access through the over Jodhpur Lane and over Hostel Lane is outlined in Section 1.8 of the condominium declaration as well. In terms of the impact of the, the proposal at hand, we are talking about a four-story apartment building containing 13 units. It has undergone significant assessment from a traffic perspective and will continue to do so as we work our way through the site plan approval process. The, the increase in traffic, so to speak, I would not characterize as overly burdensome. And I would clarify, we are not seeking to convert this to a through street or a right of way. Appropriate cost sharing mechanisms would be established with the condominium board once the land use issues are resolved through the site plan process. That is fairly typical. And that would hopefully address any concerns that have been raised. And similarly, the easement does extend through the fence. And I would expect it was always contemplated that the fence would be removed to facilitate developments to the north and to the south. Aside from that, we fully support the recommendations in the staff report, outlining the recommendation to approve the official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment. And I will be happy to address any comments or concerns of the committee if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a gentleman I believe is not able to make it. Can I have a clarification from the clerk? I was under the impression that delegations cannot, you can't step in for somebody else. Can you clarify, please?
Thank you. Through the chair, certainly it's up to committee's consent, but I understand that the person who was replacing Mr. Rose works for the same, I guess, law firm.
Thank you. I'd just like to remark that there was a citizen here who tried to step aside for another citizen to speak, and that was not permitted. So do I put this to council? So the, there is a delegate cannot make it. They would like to send somebody in their place. All those in favor? That passes. Thank you. Who is our next delegate?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me. Madam Safe, representing the owners of 11610 Young Street. And the owners received notice of the committee of the whole meeting yesterday. They tried to obtain counsel, Peter Rose. However, on the 11th hour yesterday, he was in a conflict and could not represent. And the property of 11610 Young Street is a neighboring adjacent to the car dealership slash auto shop. They did have a pre-consult meeting about their high-density development back in 2022. We are seeking defer on the German of this matter to the next committee of the whole meeting. Design, and our deferral request will cause very little prejudice to the applicant, if any at all. However, to the contrary, refusing to grant our deferral request will cause great prejudice to our client for all the following reasons. Number one, the bylaw amendment that is being considered will interfere with, without, with our development plans of high-density mixed-use towers. The proposed development and car dealership slash auto shop is within a major transit station area, which is intended for higher-density transit supportive mixed-use. The existing official plan designation is regional mixed-use corridor, which requires compact pedestrian-friendly transit-oriented built environment. A car dealership auto shop could not be more opposite to pedestrian-friendly transit-oriented development. Number four, the city is currently carrying out a study of the regional corridor and MTSA study, which is intended to lead to formulation of official plan update and OP later this year, including these lands. Therefore, consideration of the opposed use is premature and will undermine the comprehensive planning currently being undertaken for the corridor. Notwithstanding the existing zoning permission for the use, there should be no development approved that does not comply in its entirety with the existing zoning regulations until after the OP update is completed. Number five, in this regard, with respect to proposed zoning by law amendment based on the company's site plan shown on map five, we also have following more detailed comments for you. The north, number six, the north side yard, the north side yard of the auto shop car dealership adjacent to 11610 Young Street should have a minimum setback as per the current zoning regulation of three meters. The parking lot of the proposed car dealership extends to wraps around behind the rear lot line of 11610 Young Street. Therefore, since it creates a rear yard to rear yard situation, there should be an appropriate rear yard landscape buffer adjacent to the rear yard of 11610 Young Street. There is potential damage or loss of trees along the property line and within our property based on the proposed development. The subject of our proposal of an automobile dealership slash auto shop will constrain our development rights. It is a well-known fact that automobile dealerships can cause environmental and contamination issues to neighboring properties, which would negatively impact our client's property and the school adjacent, which is that that's a more sensitive issue as well, residential and also the school. For all the foreground reasons, respectfully submit that this matter should be deferred adjourned, adjourned to the next committee meeting as very little prejudice will result to the applicant, but to the contrary, great prejudice will result to our client for our, for our deferral request is not granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ted Murphy, 64 Industrial Road. He is electronic as well. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Murphy is not in attendance electronically.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, sorry, he is, but he is not in the meeting, so.
So we're, that one's done. Okay, thank you. Next, in person, we have James Counter, Counter and Mitchell Barristers, regarding notice of intention to designate 12800 Young Street Heritage Property. Welcome. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Counselor Davidson. Thank you to this committee for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Mayor, councilors, commissioners, city representatives. Given the brevity of time with respect to comments, I'm going to focus on my, my most pressing concerns with respect to the proposal for a designation for heritage on 12800 Young Street. First and foremost, I'd like to say, my family has lived and resided in Oak Ridge for quite a long period of time. My mother has lived in this house her entire life. I've lived in this house my entire life. Concerns have been raised of the possibility of a transfer of the property in the future. I can say we receive consistent offers of solicitation for sale, which are always, always ignored. My parents have an estate plan in effect, which deals with the conveyance of this property, and it's 100% the intention for the property to retain in the family for the duration of my life. My mother is a barrister and solicitor in Oak Ridge. She's been practicing for 47 years. Unfortunately, due to her health concerns, she'll be retiring in December, and we will be closing our current office. I intend to continue to represent her clients. And I'm planning on relocating to a home office, which would be at 12800 Young Street, such that the, it forms a part of my concerns with respect to this designation. Fundamentally, my understanding of the procedure is such that if the property is designated for a heritage, any exterior renovation will require compliance with the committee and its approval. This is problematic for me in two reasons. First, as a barrister and solicitor, particularly in the practice of wills and estates, I have a number of clients who are seniors. And so accessibility and mobility modifications to the home will be required in order to facilitate their access to the office. The concern is much more pressing to me and on a personal level as it relates to my own family members. As my mother is 72 years old, she has both diabetes and Parkinson's. And the medication that she's required to take can often compromise her mobility and her balance. We've had to make modifications to our home to make it senior-friendly so that she can continue to reside there, and she hopes to continue to reside there for, for the duration of her natural life. The issue is that heritage designation will then require us to go through the process of an approval by the committee if we're ever to make accessibility or mobility modifications to the home. Now, my concern is that as much as council works as effectively as possible, these processes are not always remarkably time-efficient, such that if there's an issue with respect to my mother's mobility, modifications may be required to be made in a very short time. And in order to go through the process of that approval going to heritage committee, then to whole committee, then to town council, that could be very, very restrictive, essentially creating a situation where my mother no longer has access to continue to work, to go to church, to attend medical appointments, which is a very, very significant concern for us. Furthermore, my understanding of the application process is that there is a fee to apply such that the cost of installing mobility or accessibility modifications to the home will be significantly increased by, by the, by the heritage designation being in place. My position and what my, what my hope is that this committee will consider is that a designation on this property will prioritize the intention to protect heritage and culture over the immediate and real concerns of the family whose heritage continue, we continue to reside there. We're the, we're the same people, and we always have been. It seems to me significantly problematic that, you know, we're putting aside the accessibility needs of a woman who, for lack of hurting her feelings, is essentially disabled and who has lived and cared for this home for the entirety of life. I think that a designation would, would impose an onerous financial and temporal restriction on her ability to access and utilize her home. And given that this is seniors month, I would ask that the council consider prioritizing the accessibility needs before the heritage designation. The property could always be subsequently heritage designated in the future. It's not that voting no now means it will never be. And I also would like to note that as far as these properties are concerned, our, our family has made great efforts always to maintain our property in its heritage designation or in its heritage considerations, I suppose. It's structural, the roof, the windows, all the features of the home. The home has undergone renovations. It's not 100% original. The entire west side was constructed in addition in their late 1940s, early 1950s. But nonetheless, my position that I hope the council will consider is that this designation would be considerably onerous, financially punitive, and intensely restrictive on the accessibility and mobility needs of, of the very family who, whose heritage is still a live issue and, and who continues to reside in the property to this day.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now I will ask the clerk, we, we might want to deal with some out of order items so that we can give delegates an opportunity to not have to wait all day.
Thank you. Through the chair, from feedback, it is up to council's consideration to go forward with items that have delegations so that they do not have to stay for the entire day. And then we would follow with the presentation item and then all the other items that council has pulled for consideration. So if that would be the case, the first item would be 11.8, but up to council.
And can I just do an informal vote? All those in favor of readjusting, well, I didn't even get the question out, but it looks like it's unanimous. So let's move on to 11.8. This is the 9583 Bathurst Street City Files. Would someone like to comment? Oh, Counselor Silvins. Over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the delegate Yasmin. Your, your delegation is appreciated. With regards, with regards to the delegates' questions, if I may, through you, Madam Chair, ask just a number of questions to our, to our acting commissioner of planning. And that is, it's my understanding that the, the concern that the delegate had about the use of the property for the, for the new development has, there was no consultation with them, that it's my understanding that's not correct, that the consultation did occur quite some time ago when the, when their original townhouse complex was constructed. Am I correct in that?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm not aware of any specific consultation with the condominium corporation. I can defer to staff on that if they have that information, but certainly there were opportunities. There was a, a council public meeting to actually provide information and opportunity for the public, including the abutting landowners, to comment on that proposal. So there, there has been, you know, opportunities to get information, and I believe that the landowners represented by the delegate clearly were aware of this application and certainly that there would be access for that development through their property.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So to the, to the delegate, as your ward counselor, if you wish to discuss this matter any further, for whatever reason, please, please don't hesitate to contact my office so we can sit down and have a fulsome discussion. And I could perhaps help you and lead you through a certain aspects of this that, that you are so concerned about and your board. And I will gladly do that. So please contact my office. And with that, I would move the recommendations for agenda item 11.8.
Thank you. And would anyone else like to speak? No, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? That motion passes. Thank you. Self off. Next, we go to 11.10. That it, yes, that is the one-one-five-nine-two zoning amendment application. And would anyone on council like to speak to it? Counselor Tweed.
Good, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you so much for our reasons on behalf of also our applicants being here as well. So I have the following question. Maybe the first one is for our staff. Explain to me, in the report, we mentioned the holding H bylaws. Is there any specific definition for that bylaw? To our staff.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I don't understand. Is there a specific definition for the whole?
It's a holding H. So I don't know exactly the bylaws for. So we are lifting that bylaw. Just wondering, is it the content or that bylaw?
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. The holding provisions that are being referred to in the staff report were placed in there quite some time ago. It was actually in the nineteen-eighties. There was concern about servicing the lands for that whole quadrant for development. So this holding provision is a remnant of that larger area that was put in a holding provision. The other lands have developed, and it was really just to address the availability of municipal servicing. And that is indeed in place now. So that's why we are supporting the lifting of the hold.
Okay, thank you so much. Another question regarding to the, the zonings. So as I remember, the Young Street is also a mixture, a mixed-use corridor. But from the current bylaw, is that piece of land being designated for commercial or other purpose? Which one is high priority now?
Through you, Madam Chair. The existing zoning on the site obviously is not indicative of what is being proposed in the quadrant, and, and that's not unusual in and of itself. Most of the development that happens within the corridor goes through a rezoning process. Certainly, the official plan designation, as noted in the staff report, allows for a full range and mix of uses, including a car dealership, identity uses. It's, it's a full range of uses that are permitted on the site.
So for the purpose of the land being targeted as auto dealers, so it's within the current bylaw range, right? So we are allowed that to be, to be in place?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Another one is, I think around one year ago, we have publicly discussing about the, the environment protections. At the backyard of this plant, I remember, so we have a lot of the grassland and also trees and plants. I think one of the residents here talking about that tree, right? Environment protections. In this plan, is there any changes or any measurements can true the protection of environment?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the staff report again does recognize that there is a natural heritage area to the rear of the site. As the properties have developed on that side of Young Street, those lands have been reviewed. They've been staked by Conservation Authority, and the limits for those features have been identified. And that's usually been done through individual natural heritage evaluations submitted as part of the applications. The applicant has done that. Our, our park staff has reviews that, reviewed that, as has the Conservation Authority. And what's been recommended is the establishment of a ten-meter buffer to protect that area. And that's been taken into consideration with the, the proposal. Those lands will be rezoned and protected.
Great. Another question regarding to the school areas. I know this land is connected with a, a school. I remember last time the school representative came here discussing about the boundaries protect, because kids might running around, right? So what exactly the proposals being, being discussed for protecting in case of a school, kids running to their own property because it's a car dealer, I assume more cars driving around?
Through you, Madam Chair. The, the staff and the applicant have been working closely together to address these types of concerns which were raised at the council public meeting. There will be protective fencing put in place to address that issue. And the, the dealership has been set up in such a way that you drive in to get your service, as a lot of dealerships are right now. There may be some storage of vehicles on the site, but the site will be protected in and of itself from the abutting uses.
Okay. My last question might be related to traffic. I know this location will be along Young Street, the north of the Agon Mills, so not, no, Nineteenth Street. So how, how the traffic, traffic studies assess for this part of the section of traffic? Is there going to be a big, big impact for traffic?
Through you, Madam Chair. The, the application was reviewed by the city's transportation staff. There were no issues identified. But certainly, we're working through the site plan process. As I said, there's a mix and range of uses that are occurring here. The majority of these on the west side of Young Street are not high-density at this time. They're really lower-density. We've received no concerns from the region or our traffic staff.
Okay, thank you so much. So for the reasons, I think I'm, I'm asking many questions already. If you have a further question, because of it, you still have one week, please welcome to my office for, for the discussion. So far, I'm going to accept this motion. Thank you so much. I don't have further questions.
Thank you. Next, we have Regional and Local Councillor DePaula.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And it does sound like the, the ward councillor has moved the motion for, for approval on the site. And I'm afraid I can't support that. I can't support that position. I, I, I really take exception to the, to the, to the use and this size of lot. I have a big problem with the ten-meter buffer from this natural heritage area. I think the, the adjacent uses, the school will lose the benefit of their adjacency to that natural forested area. The property north of the north, whatever, whatever's built, my, my preference would be, you know, residential on Young Street with a significant buffer into the environmental area. I think that both of those sites or all that sites, this, this, this MTSA as a whole would enjoy that, that environment. The, the visual impact of that environmental area, you know, the, the ability to, to use it for the city to program possibly in, in that area. And I, I would rather see the conveyance of, you know, a, a trail system throughout there. This is going to be a heavily populated area, and this is the extent of it. Nothing, nothing north of here will be densely populated, but the Young and Nineteenth is a, is an MTSA. I believe this falls within that, that definition. I'd rather see a, a different coordinated approach. I, I, you know, I, I would be supportive of, of at least waiting until the, you know, official plan update is complete for the, for that area. And, you know, I, I, I do have a number of concerns for the dealership. For this, for this to become a parking lot all along the extent of that natural area, and then maybe very, very good actors today, certainly the, the Honda dealership in two iterations in the south end of Richmond Hill, they're wonderful community partners, wonderful, you know, business operation in general. They're, they're part of the Richmond community for a long time, both on Young and Oak and now their, their current place at Young and Sixteenth. And I assume they would be here too, but if we just blanket zone and allow a parking lot of running, running along this, you know, paving this area along this, this forested, real, real last remaining opportunity in what's going to be a densely populated area. I, I, I think it's, it's short-sighted because in the future, who knows what other use might, might be used once the zoning is granted. There, I, I've had a real difficulty trying to ascertain how that land was acquired. Originally, it was the regional York that owned that land, and I just can't, I can't track the conveyance of, of that property in, in the rear adjacent to the forest from York Region's hands to, through a public process to, to the current applicant. And I've, you know, short of getting those answers and, and understanding why the ten-meter buffer requirement, when, when we're, when we're asking for thirty meters in most cases, always looking, looking for a hundred feet from a significant natural heritage feature, I'm just unable to support this at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Councillor Regional and Local Councillor Chan.
Thank you. First, thank you for the delegate who spoke on this particular application. I hear your concern. I believe it's at least six or more reasons being mentioned. I hear that. Initially, I, I, I was looking at from the environmental protection or natural heritage standpoint. However, I have to say that something taken into consideration on my end anyway, there is already a car dealership not far away from this lot. The other, the other thing is that I take comfort, I'm not an environmental specialist, but nonetheless, both the city and the Toronto and Region Conservation Authority, TRCA, have, have done and, and basically look at from the national, natural heritage standpoint, have no issues or concern. That's my understanding. That's, I saw the acting commission order of planning. So a professional staff saying that, that insofar as the concerns, I do hear about, you know, usually talk about car dealership that would be all, or other, a gas station would be issue and concern about contamination and so on, so on. But I, as I said, I have the faith and trust in our professional staff here in the city as well as the TRCA. They won't have, they would have raised concern if there are any. I'm not even going to touch on the economic development standpoint. That's not really into a planning per se, but focusing on what are the factors than insofar as the concern that I initially have about the natural heritage. Personally, I'm satisfied. That is the case. And the other thing too is that, and my understanding, perhaps staff could confirm, is going to be more like, like the just only Guang brace car dealership. This one will be a little bit going vertical. Through you, Madam Chair. Maybe I can get some answer from the acting planning commissioner or his staff.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll defer the question to Acting Director Janetta.
Thank you. Through the Charity Councillor Chan, this is going to be a two-story building. So it's not a typical one-story format, which automotive, automotive dealerships are typically. So it'll be in a two-story format. So yes, a little bit more vertical than typical, which is why it's able to be a little bit more longer, but a little bit higher.
Thank you, because appears to be the trend. I know there's another one coming further down on Young Street in what, five, I believe, is also talking about multi-story car dealership is coming. So at that, on that note, I have to say that based on the, what I'm, I'm saying earlier on, the concerns of the natural heritage and impact of it is actually something that may have moved me in either direction. I'm satisfied that is actually not in any way, form, or shape as determined by professional planners. That's my issue. And given there's also already another car dealership in the area, I'm hard pressed to find a reason of, of not to support. So here's my comments and answers to the question. I appreciate that. And Madam Chair, I will support the motion in front of us.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor West.
Thank you. So I mean, I, if, if I'm being completely honest, which of course I always am, I think we need to know that, I mean, I would prefer to see, you know, a residential development on this site. But the reality is that, you know, we, this is, this type of use is obviously very much allowed on the regional mixed-use corridor. And, you know, and I think this was actually haunted that I was speaking to at some point in the past, and I learned just how many jobs actually car dealerships create nowadays. It's actually a lot more than I thought. And these are, you know, these high-tech computers that are driving around our streets here are not low-tech type jobs. I mean, this is, these are, are decent jobs that are being created, and there's quite a number of them. And, you know, I, I get that we need to have complete communities and all that kind of stuff. And, and our official plan does the very best that it can to map out how that's going to end up looking. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we don't have all of the instruments to create the community exactly the way we want it. But, you know, we, we get pretty close. So I don't actually see any, any reason, based on the staff report and what we've heard here today, that we wouldn't be able to support this. But I do have, I have, did hear some concerns earlier in speaking to the applicant, sorry, the adjoining property, that there may be some issues on a site-specific basis that are not maybe as clear yet as they should be. And that's not an uncommon situation before we've gone through the site plan process. But just to confirm, maybe through you, Madam Chair, or Commissioner, the site plan process is to come. That'll be the next step, I presume, right?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the site plan application has already been submitted. Comments have been received through circulation and obviously from the abutting landowners through the public meeting process. So these, these factors are to be addressed and taken into consideration as part of finalizing that application.
I, I don't really need to say this, I suppose, because I'm, I know, I'm very confident that the staff will be looking at this anyway. But, I mean, there is some environmentally sensitive land abutting this, although it's within the developable envelope, clearly. And there's, you know, a school next door and so on. So I would presume that all the steps that we can take that are realistic will be taken in order to, you know, do what we need to do to make sure that those, those separations in whatever form they end up taking are, are. So those would be my comments. I mean, you know, I, I get what is being said here on council, and, and I understand that. But I think at the end of the day, given what we have in front of us, information that we have in front of us, you know, this, this makes sense, this motion.
Thank you. Are you second rounder? Did you speak yet? No. Okay, Counselor Silvitz. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for the report and to the applicant who spoke. I just wanted to refer to the concerns that Regional Councillor DePaulo has stated and Mayor West has now discussed as well. In the staff report on pages nine and ten, there is a specific paragraph that is, is dedicated to natural heritage. And as one who is always concerned about natural heritage, I have to say that I, I don't have concerns here. If you read this paragraph, it's clearly states that natural heritage planning staff and the TRCA, who have advised of no concerns of the subject zoning by law amendment applications. Therefore, it demonstrates that the proposed development maintains the required separation with the exception of the reduced ten meters regularized buffer, which is proposed by the applicant to protect the long-term stable top of slope, which is to be restored and enhanced fenced and conveyed to the city through the related site plan application. So I have no doubt that that is going to take place. And so for that reason, I do support these recommendations. And I, I believe that our planning staff and our park and natural heritage planning staff and the TRCA have done their due diligence. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, now, I do want to say myself, I'm, I'm always a little twitchy about rezoning areas that are still green. And I, I always hope that we can receive proposals that incorporate that, don't necessarily require a zoning change. So anyway, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? That carries all those opposed? Yep, that carries. Thank you. We're moving on to eleven-eighteen-eight. And that is the, we, we had a delegation and Mr. Counter and would, oh, sorry, eighteen-point-eight is, oh, sorry. Oh. Right, one-zero, it's one-zero-two-one-seven, yeah. Okay. So would anyone like to discuss it? Mayor, Mayor West?
This is the one that the, the delegation did not come, right? Okay. I mean, just for the sake of, you know, keeping Okay. I mean, just for the sake of keeping things brief, I'll be happy to move that.
Okay. No discussion needed? No. Okay. So do we need to move the motion for this? Okay. Yes, you've made, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? And that is passed. Next, we go to 1111812. And this one is the delegate we received speaking about 12800 Young Street. Yes, Counselor Silvitz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see Mr. Counter unfortunately has left council chambers. So I do hope that he will watch this in the archived stream. I just wanted to mention a few things. So Mr. Counter was specifically concerned about an exterior ramp that maybe, that may need to be constructed for his mother. And he stated that he felt that this this particular item coming forward is putting aside his mother's needs. It's onerous, it's punitive and restrictive. And I really, I absolutely disagree with that respectfully. And what I wanted to ask is through you, Madam Chair, to our acting commissioner or to our heritage staff who are here today. If someone is to build a necessary exterior ramp to accommodate a disability, how does, how does that work with regards to timing? Does it come to HRH? Does it then have to come back to council? And is there an increase of fee? Should this property be identified? That was another question, another statement that Mr. Counter said. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're on. Go ahead.
Thank you through yourself, Madam Chair. Yes, I do understand the concerns that if something comes urgently, he needs to act quickly and ensure that his mother still has access to his property. So when it comes to accessibility issues, we refer to the standards and guidelines for the conservation of historic places in Canada. That's the most common manual that heritage professionals use and refer to when determining how to proceed with what is like the right way to do heritage conservation. And it mentions that when it comes to accessibility issues, there needs to be a fine balance between, you know, ensuring that the property remains accessible to everybody, but also conserving the heritage values, the heritage attributes of the property. So if this designation does come forward, we would be working with Mr. Counter and his family to identify where, what needs they have with accessibility, what their plans are, and then we would try to find a way forward that would minimize the impact to the heritage attributes and potentially not require heritage permit at all. So they would be able to save money that way, and then they wouldn't have to go through the permit process, the heritage permit process at all.
Thank you. Is, through you, Madam Chair, is there a higher fee associated with a heritage identification or is, would it be the same fee that one would have to pay if one was asking to build a ramp?
Yes. So there's two different types of heritage permits. There's minor heritage permit and there's a major heritage permit. Minor, I would imagine that something like this accessibility issue would be, if needed at all. Because the major heritage permits tend to be for large alterations, like an addition, demolition, more significant changes to the property, which a ramp, I imagine, would not do that. So it wouldn't be a major heritage permit.
Thank you for that clarification. I really appreciate it. So I will, I will move this, I'll move this forward as the Chair of Heritage Richmond Hill and the Chair of our Accessibility Committee. I will ensure, Mr. Counter, that should you, should the need to build a ramp arise, that through our staff, we will ensure that this is done, this is done effectively and efficiently, and it does not in any way negatively impact your mother or your family. So I undertake that right here and I say it in public. So, Madam Chair, I'm not sure what to do. I know there's 1118, which is the extracts, which includes all of this. And I'd like to move that. I just further would like to say that this was passed, these recommendations were passed unanimously at Heritage Richmond Hill. And I stand by that. So just with some advice as to where we go next. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we're discussing this particular one. The others were not, were not separated for discussion, right? So this is specifically about this. And then when we do vote, it's on the whole, all of them, right? Or the all the other ones were passed with consent. So we're only dealing with this. Okay. Anyone else like to speak to this? Yes, Counselor Concent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I do want to come back to the layers that are required when somebody wants to make modifications to a heritage property. So if I'm understanding correctly, we have a normal permit process if somebody wants to make a modification to their home. But if you have a heritage property, now you have a additional layer that you would go through, if I'm not mistaken, when you're making, even if it's a minor modification. As Counselor Silvitz was talking about, we're also looking at fees. So I'm, I'm a little confused here that if, under the Accessibility Act, and he is indicating that he's, he will be operating his business out of here. If he was operating a business elsewhere along Young Street, he would be required to make sure that, you know, his business is, you know, accessibility compliant. And so it sounds to me that just because he's now operating out of his home and operating a business, he would still have that requirement, I would think. But it sounds like he's going to get dinged a second fee, you know, over and above what somebody else, you know, would have had in the same situation on Long Young Street if they didn't have a heritage designation. So if I could just get some clarification on that, be appreciated.
Madam Chair, no, not necessarily. So if you don't require heritage permit for any alteration, it's only for alterations that may impact a heritage attribute. So if it's like a wooden ramp that is reversible, that may not necessarily require heritage permit. So it's, and there's only certain facades of the building that are proposed to be covered by the heritage designation. So if Mr. Counter wants to make other portions of the property accessible, put the ramp or some other accessible feature onto the property, that also would not require a heritage permit.
Understood. Thank you for the response. I guess the, I guess my other question then comes down to timing. We've done a lot of work to try and make sure that, you know, the permit process goes very quickly when we're talking about development applications and so forth. How are we in situations where we're looking at minor renovations? What, you know, because obviously people complain about the length of time sometimes it takes to get a permit. So have we made any additional changes similar to what we've done in planning and engineering? Is the same thing happening here?
Yeah. Through you, Madam Chair, it's a work in progress. We're hoping to decrease in time, and that's why we try to find alternative ways to alter a property if it's needed. So a heritage permit process isn't needed at all. But yes, we are looking to find ways to decrease the time that it takes to receive approval for a heritage permit.
Okay. Thank you for the response. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would like to make some remarks. I'm on the Heritage Committee and I supported this. But I do have to say, having experienced what it is like to look after an elderly parent, the difference between needing a ramp is overnight. Someone falls, they break their hip. And adding this extra layer, it worries me. And I do, I have had a chance to talk to the owner since and the son and the gentleman that appeared. And he does seem completely tied to that property. And I do believe they're good stewards of that property. And while I hate to change my mind from what I said at the Heritage meeting, I do feel like this may be undue extra steps for him that he doesn't, he's really not clear on whether or not it would be a problem or not. If we were to remove this from the delegate designation right now, is there time before the provincial deadlines to revisit it in 20, before we are, you know, having to make decisions hard and fast?
Through you, Madam Chair, that the work has been done. So we could bring it forward in the future, but the concern would be that there would be, right now, it's on council's mind why we're doing this. So if we were to take this back and then bring it forward at a future date, that momentum may be lost. So that would be the biggest fear. And we're not sure if any alterations might happen between now and when designation is potentially brought forward. So we would, it's still staff's recommendation that the designation come forward right now.
Thank you. And if this doesn't pass, is there opportunity in the future? Does that, is there a five-year rule that we, or are there opportunities in the future to designate this in the future? Or is there some penalty for us not doing it today?
Yes, through you. There, there's a lot of like asterisks to whether designation could proceed. Like if certain planning applications come forward and the property is not on the list, is dropped off, then we have lost the ability to designate. But if it is dropped off on the list, yes, there would be that five-year wait that we, before we can add it back to the list if we choose to. But we may still have the opportunity to designate later.
Thank you. It's the asterisk that troubled me. And I think red tape is really difficult for people who are dealing with seniors. And I do believe this family has been good stewards. And I don't know if that was his mother who was with him, but clearly it's true that she might need consideration for mobility issues. So I'm afraid I'm going to have to go against what I decided at the Heritage Club because we really have to consider the people. And I firmly believe he wants his mother to age in place and will treat the property. So we'll put it to a vote if no one else needs to say anything. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just with regards to your comments and to all the comments that we have, we have made here this afternoon. Again, I still stand by the recommendations from Heritage Richmond Hill. And I do, while I am completely sympathetic and empathetic to the Counter family's concerns about accessibility for his mother. And yes, it was apparent that they most definitely will need that. I have no doubt that our staff will work diligently with him and the family in order to ensure that a ramp on this particular property is built with as quickly as possible, so that, so that we can, we can do that. We're not gonna, we're not going to not go through the hoops and all the, everything that we have to do because of policy and procedure and everything under the Ontario Heritage Act. But I do believe that I have, I do believe that our staff will do everything that is necessary, both with heritage and planning and, and, and building, that this ramp can be constructed without any negative impact to the Counter family. So I will, just one other thing I wanted to mention, but, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention was that Mr. Counter and his family have other options available to them as we move through this process. And I know that Mr. Counter has discussed this with our heritage staff. And there are guidelines and dates that are set in place once this is, should this be approved. And it still has to go to council next week for approvals. That those, those sort of speed bumps that are put in place, that the Counter family can definitely make use of them if they believe it's necessary to appeal this decision. So he's not put in, they're not put in a box here. There's still many, still many avenues that they can take, even should this be, should this pass and be approved next week at council. So I'm, I am satisfied. I believe that our, the staff report for this particular, for this particular item very clearly indicates the necessity for us to designate this property and with timing. And, and that does supersede, as far as I'm concerned, any, any other concerns, because I believe they will be dealt with appropriately, effectively and efficiently by our staff. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. So again, thank you to our staff who prepared many, 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 let's see how many, 13, 13 of them at our last Heritage Richmond Hill Committee. Thank you for all the work you've done into our Designating Subcommittee. There, there is so much work that goes into something like this. And we were supposedly under a gun, so to speak. But we're still waiting to see if Bill 200 is going to get royal assent. And if Bill 200 does get royal assent, then there will be an extension that we will be given to identify and designate properties to 2027. So everything that is considered here, I do believe that the necessity to designate this property is absolute. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Regional and Local Counselor DePaolo.
Hey, thank you very much, Madam Chair. This certainly is a tough one. I mean, this whole process, I really want to thank our staff and those charged with heritage preservation and making reservations, recommendations to us. There's so many files that you're working on and you're trying to get in under that provincial deadline with so many homes. And this council is endorsing 95-plus percent of the recommendations that come forward. But there is, there is this one exception when it's someone who's lived in this home for 72 years is by proxy through their, through their son, one would assume, making a very passionate plea to us. And this is where it's really tough, but we have to, we have to consider that. And I'm just, I'm just hesitant or reluctant to go against the wishes of the very homeowner that, whose, whose family and whose heritage and that we are intending to preserve. And when I have a reasonable confidence, which I do in this case, that, that, that the owner, the ownership is not in jeopardy. So I'm not saying not, not never. I'm agreeing of the heritage value of the property. And I'm just saying not now, in light of the passionate plea. I'm going to go along with and, you know, agree with the Chair and choose the Chair of this meeting in spite of all the great work that's done at Heritage Richmond Hill. And, you know, would definitely normally support all the recommendations coming from Heritage Richmond Hill. But in this case, inconsistency, because there's been three cases so far of the, I think, 50-plus that we've dealt with, where you have that longtime homeowner coming and telling us, telling us that this isn't how they prefer to proceed that, at a future date, I'm not saying never, but I'm going to say not now. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's the second round, Counselor Chan?
I first spoke in the first.
Oh, you didn't. My apologies. Over to you.
My turn? Oh, thank you. Oh, yes, no. Oh, okay. Thank you. I see that. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Clerk. Yeah, this is always a challenge, struggling in the sense that the Heritage Vice President and our staff is struggling to meet well and we're starting to operate within the timetable. We don't create, but under the Provincial Act. And at the same time, we're dealing with homeowners for one reason or other, have a good reason in their mind, say, no, not so fast, things of that nature. Now, I do, I hear about the perspective coming from a delegate and also the written submission saying that there may be additional steps or cost expenses involved if they want to do certain things. But I'm not quite convinced they will be creating undue hardship from an economic standpoint. However, there's another issue that the delegate raised in the oral delegation and written submission. However, there's another issue that the delegate raised in the oral delegation and written submission. I want to get a sense from our city solicitor. If it works, consider that might have to be done in a co-session, so be it. But I hear the words, human rights issue and as impacting on mobility. I believe that's what's been mentioned and glad that the clerk, Mr. Clerk confirmed that. To the extent that it can be answered in an open session, my question to the city solicitor through you, Madam Chair, is that, because the reason I ask that is if it considers an, an issue to contend with by a city solicitor, then it's opened up the risk of liability. But through you, Madam Chair, and where in fact it's something that can be answered in open session. Thank you.
Certainly. Through you, Madam Chair. The Ontario Heritage Act, there's a lot of misunderstanding and perhaps, you know, it's always the municipality's job to do a better job in communicating in terms of the protections afforded under the Heritage Act and with the negative sort of stigma that's attached to it. So the premise of the act is that the designation solely protects the attributes that are worthy of protection. It's only the attributes. So hypothetically, if it was a stained glass window and that stained glass window was the attribute, you can do anything to the property, you can alter the property as long as it doesn't affect the listed attribute being that stained glass window. Now, with respect to this property, you heard city staff say that the attribute is the elevation, which is the front facade. So that the property, the only thing that's afforded protection is, is the elevation, is the front facade. So that, for example, if there's a wooden ramp that's attached to it, you already heard city staff say that it's, it'd be difficult to imagine how that posed hypothetical wooden ramp, because we don't actually have a sketch, would affect the attribute and no permit would be required. No permit, no permit, no fee, it would be no different than anybody else coming in and what other permit they would require other than the Heritage Act. Now, if the ramp hypothetically is a 12-foot overhead door that goes through the, through the elevation, that's why there's an asterisk in terms of for that. So, but if it's a simple wooden ramp to facilitate access, you already heard city staff say that it'd be unlikely, that it would trigger, likely to affect the attribute, triggering a section 33 alteration permit. So that's why when we have these sort of things, there has to be a better job in terms of communicating what exactly is being protected under the Heritage Act and what is contemplated in terms of coming forward and overcoming the, the historical stigma in terms of what the designation is under the Ontario Heritage Act. Now, that's the sort of long answer to the, to the short point. The human rights issue, I don't quite understand at this point in terms of how that would be triggered if it, if it's simply a ramp to facilitate access when you already heard city staff say that there's many permutations where it would not affect the attribute and no permit would be required. So, but again, this is all hypothetical because we don't have an application to install a ramp that staff can look at, review and work with the applicant in terms of facilitating.
Thank you for the answer through, Madam Chair, because it's certainly good to hear from our city solicitor because that has been raised both, the human rights issue has been raised both in our delegation and the written submission. And I, as someone who have to vote on it, I want to be absolutely clear and based on the response of the city solicitor, I'm comfortable now to support the motion in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Record the vote. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Thank you. Through the Chair, building on item 11.18.12, moved by councillor Silvitz, councillor Silvitz.
Yes.
Councillor Thompson.
Yes.
Regional and local councillor DePaola.
No.
Councillor Tree. Councillor Davidson.
No.
Regional and local councillor Chan.
Yes.
Mayor West.
Yes.
Councillor Shu.
Yes.
Councillor Liu.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Is it now time to take a break? So we, do we need a motion for that? Motion to take a one-hour break? All those in favor, that passes. So we will be back here at 1:45. Thank you.